I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Here.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Here.
Mr. Canwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Here.
Dr. Wugley?
Here. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I will need an approval for an exempt session today.
I move the board to hold an exempt session for the purpose of negotiations that is provided in Section 20.173 of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Kunkel that the board hold an exempt session for the purpose of negotiations as provided in Section 20.173 of the Code of Iowa. Roll call, vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes. Vision statement: It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state, not in some things, but in everything, not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests this evening. If you would like to address the board regarding a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. You need to come up to the podium, you get three minutes, and if you could please refrain from mentioning any specific names, that would be well appreciated. And when you do come up, please just let us know the capacity with what you are in the district. And then also, remember that since it's a non-agenda item, we will listen to you, but we really can't address it. So with that being said, would somebody like to please come up to the podium? Yes.
Good evening, school board members. I hope the blistering cold weather is not putting a damper on the warm and positive attitude you bring to the meeting to engage in the discussions that are important for our kids' outlook and futures. My name is Pagnaja Pilukla, and I am a brown-skinned community member, a fellow citizen, and a mother of two brown girls who graduated from the Pleasant Valley High School. I've come here with my family's experiences in the community and at the Pleasant Valley Community School District. I am here to commend Pleasant Valley Community School District for taking diversity and equity seriously in the past, putting more resources for the future, and doing all it can to increase awareness among their students, staff, teachers, and administration. This all-around diversity and equity education is important in general, especially so for our kids, white, black, brown, gay, trans, straight, Christian, Muslim, Hindu, and Jewish, app, whatever other. It's important because they are our future leaders, particularly in the light of current lawsuit relating to an offensive, abominable, and disgusting racist video that has been recirculated. All of you surely will agree that there is no better opportune time to put more resources and heighten the education on this topic. Thank you. Mr. Erickson and Mr. Struce were mentioned in the lawsuit. These two individuals have done their jobs well, given their resources. Thank you both for all you do to keep our kids educated, safe, tolerant, open-minded, secular, and be independent thinkers. Unfortunately, this lawsuit will now cost the school district a heck of a lot more money, and we would have saved a whole lot of money had we invested resources, financial and otherwise, to help educate our students better on diversity, equity, tolerance, et cetera. Finally, I want to thank the board for approving more financial resources and allowing for an external evaluation of the current practices and initiatives of inclusion, diversity, and equity at the Pleasant Valley Community School District. Such enhanced initiatives is what makes Pleasant Valley an inclusive school district with exceptional academic, social, and moral standards. That is a financial investment that's a no-brainer. After all, education is about pushing boundaries, which comes from evaluating and assessing the impact of our own programs, policies, and initiatives. Thank you for doing that. You know, I heard somewhere, diversity is a fact, equity is a choice, inclusion is an action to which belonging will be an outcome. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the board regarding a non-agenda item?
Good evening. I am Angie Wyatt, and I am a teacher in the district. I came tonight because I wanted to say thank you for creating Friday early outs for your teachers. It was the right decision to make, and I don't think the board has thanked enough for all of the hard decisions that you have to create or have to make. Each of those hard decisions is affecting our goals as a district. Our goal is to have the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state, not in some things, but in all things, not for some students, but for all students. So let's check in on that goal and see how we're doing. I looked it up, and of the 1,282 public schools in Iowa, all of our elementaries are in the top 100 schools. Three of our schools are in the top 1% of Iowa public schools. Hopefull Elementary and Pleasant View Elementary are the number two and the number four schools in the state of Iowa. Statistically speaking, academically, we are great. This is my second year in the district, and really honestly, our reputation is what brought me to PV. Who doesn't want to be a part of the best schools in the state? Our teachers, our staff, our students, our families, and our community are what make this district so great, which leads me to my next point. All stakeholders in this district want what's best for our children and our students. None of us would be here tonight if that were not the case. Our children deserve the best. Our teachers play a huge role in that. I play a huge role in that. I want to be the teacher our students deserve. I want to support our struggling students and push all of my students to achieve their best. I want to support my students' social and emotional needs, which are just as diverse as our academic ones. Elementary teachers, and to an extent, my always supportive husband, truly know how much goes into, how much time goes into doing my absolute best for our kids every single day. My teaching experience makes talking to you a little easier tonight. I mean, speaking from a core subject standpoint only, I prepare five speeches per day. I also make specialized changes to those speeches for each of my 24 students in my classroom. I create grade and give assessments based off of those speeches to see if my students grasp the important ideas, and that's really just touching the surface of what we do as educators. All of this takes so much time if you want my colleagues and me to be the best teachers for our students. Giving me this time on Friday allows me to collaborate with other teachers to improve my practice, gives me the chance to plan lessons for the next week during my workday rather than on Sunday night when my two-year-old wants one more game of dinosaur or my eight-year-old finally decides she wants to learn to tie her shoes. Giving me this time gives me the permission to not feel guilty for having to wing a lesson because last night, rather than doing schoolwork for the fifth night in a row, I chose my family, and it's because you're giving us the extra time to do that. Being a parent is hard, and I will never downplay that. This is so hard, and changing our schedule adds just one more obstacle for our families to have to overcome. But imagine what our children learn from us when we show them how to navigate the hard things in life. Ultimately, we are doing this for the greater good. We are doing this so we have better teachers in the classroom. My students will have a better version of me because I'm given more of my working day to prepare for their individual needs. A better version of me because I will get to take back some of my family time and be a happier person. A better version of me because I will have a chance to work with my teacher teams more and find strategies and lessons that just work better than what I've been doing all along. So, from a humble teacher, thank you so much for giving us Friday worktime. Thank you for helping us achieve our goal of having the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state, not in some things, but in all things, not for some students, but for all students.
Would there be anybody else who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item?
Thank you, school board. I am Jane Wheeler. I'm a teacher and coach here, and we have three daughters in the district.
And my name is Kenny Wheeler. I am a father of three children, elementary age, and I'm our girls' track and field coach at Pleasant Valley High School.
We're here to share our appreciation to the district and the community school here for investing time and resources into the important work of improving schools so that not just some students, but as everyone has mentioned, all students, can uniquely learn in an environment that allows them to feel valued and supported to succeed in. I'm also here to share a little bit with our PV community of parents and fellow investors in PV education, some thoughts about our inclusive education. I am a white female, as you can probably tell, who grew up in rural Iowa and earned a 4.0 GPA in high school. I was also able to win a state cross-country championship. I was recruited by several colleges, and after college, I got my dream job here at Pleasant Valley right after my first interview. I share these backgrounds not to boast about my accomplishments, but to give you a glimpse of my life's perspectives I have had. Yes, those experiences have come partly because of my hard work, but also very much because I was privileged and blessed to be born into a white, middle-class family in Iowa. I cannot think of a time in my life that I have not felt included. The world is my safe space as a white female. I feel valued and affirmed pretty much everywhere I go. But my worldview was expanded by the most important decision I made in my life, marrying the man I love, a black man. Marrying into his family, I was offered an opportunity, an opportunity to finally learn through others' experiences, and often those experiences of what it felt to be excluded in almost every space you inhabit. My father-in-law grew up in Jackson, Mississippi during Jim Crow. Everywhere he went, there were visible, and at that time, legal signs of why he was not included or welcomed. My mother-in-law grew up in a very large, low-income family in East St. Louis. She knew education was her key to progress, and she took advantage of the few opportunities that she was offered because she knew for her there would not be a second chance. These two amazing individuals, who I am so blessed to have as my mother and father now, produced three brilliant sons, an engineer, a LinkedIn tech person, and an amazing student advisor at Western Illinois, who's also my phenomenal husband. Those two had the burden and responsibility of raising three black sons in an America that is often not safe for black boys and men. Mr. and Mrs. Wheeler were very strict because they knew what their sons would face. They had to have the talk with them about what to do if they were pulled over. They had to tell them how not to wear their hat, and they had to tell them how to speak in certain spaces, all while knowing even if they raised their sons perfectly, they might still end up in the wrong place at the wrong time. I share this story because I want all parents and people in this room invested in the education of students at PV to think about the new committee we are starting and the title, the Inclusive Education Committee. What does it mean to your children and all children to really be fully included in our education? I know some in this room feel this committee is not needed because it's already fine at PV, but if you feel that way, I invite you to take the opportunity I was afforded when I was married into Kenny's family, to sit at this committee or with this committee with an open heart and a listening ear. You have made it the time to come to these board meetings, so take the time to be a part of this committee or listen to the committee, to learn about their experiences with a truly open mind, hear why they feel this committee's work is needed, so that not just some kids, but all kids will be included and valued in our education.
Okay, so I didn't write anything. I think I would say this, and I think a lot about my coaching experiences here over the last 15 years. To know that we are putting the time and effort and energy in the work that we do as educators and the work that you all do as a school board, I think about two words. One is perfection, and the other is excellence. And perfection suggests that we have a finished product and we don't have any flaws. Excellence suggests that we're continually learning how to refine ourselves to find those flaws so that we can be better and ultimately may be perfect. And so I appreciate just the deep reflection that you all have afforded, the different diversity and inclusion groups within the school district, and just continue to ask that you make those efforts for all of our students to make, you know, not just the schools themselves a better community, but just our Pleasant Valley community a better community. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item?
Hello, my name is Azia, and I am a senior at the high school. First off, I'd like to thank the board members and the audience for their time here tonight. I understand that there is no more action to be taken by the board regarding the equity audit, but I would like to petition the audience about its importance. Thankfully, the vast majority of parents and students aren't in favor of the audit and are excited to engage in positive change in our district and schools. I understand how some fear it could lead to an encroachment on their right to teach their own children, but it is absolutely crucial that this audit occur and occur with support from the parent, student, and administrative bodies. This audit is a vital first step toward positive change. Those who see it as unnecessary and a wasteful taxpayer burden fail to see that it is but a minutie compared to the over-a-million-dollar annual school budget and fail to see what is actually taking place in our schools. They are too far removed from the situation to see its grimy reality and far too close to view objectively. Individuals might quote "surface-level information regarding diversity and efforts to improve our schools," but there is a much greater level of depth and progress required before we can truly claim to be inclusive. Racist, sexist, ableist, and bigoted jokes still pervade our halls, students still bully, avoid, and ostracize those who are different, and students still fail to grasp perspectives, stuck in a bubble of their own experiences and ideas. The recent recirculation of a video where two white students pretended to murder an African-American finds a specific horrifying example. How can we claim to do enough to promote diversity, inclusion, and acceptance when these acts of blatant racism and discrimination still take place in our schools? We must combat the idea that any of these actions are rottable or acceptable, but we must first identify how and where they begin. Only through an outside, unbiased lens can we catch the areas we have missed and begin making our schools a better place for all. Our schools must no longer be breeding grounds for this type of obscene, hateful behavior, and through empathy, discourse, and proactive methods, beginning with this audit, we can build up individuals who go through their lives representing not just academic and economic excellence, but spreading and achieving excellence of character. I'd like to thank the board and all involved for investing in our diversity, inclusion, and future expectations. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item? If not, we will go to board members. Ms. Anderson?
Yeah, I just have three things to share, and it's kind of a long conversation. I mentioned it last week, but I did do some checking. The United Way Equity Challenge is still open and live. It's a challenge through the, it's a 21-day, you take and answer questions. I just wanted to share that as a point, and I know this is an interesting topic, and it's very much part of what I do, and I just wanted to share two books that have really helped in my work department group. One book is entitled "We Can't Talk About This at Work" by Mary Francis, and the second book, what's really defined work groups and getting to that next level of trust, is a book by Amy Edmondson, and it's called "Psychological Safety," as a baseline of working towards understanding each other. So I just really wanted, at the start, and listen to each other, I think these are some, we're in some trying times, and the more education we can get as people, I just really think it resonates with my neighbors.
Mr. Ayers?
I have nothing, thank you.
Ms. Hoskins?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay. Ms. Kunkel?
I just wanted to share that over the weekend, Iowa Future First Lego League, I should say, headed state competition at Iowa State University College of Engineering, and I think, just looking at some of the students that participate in this event, I thought Pleasant Valley was probably well-represented there, and I just wanted to congratulate all the students that worked hard this year, that had some obstacles in completing their projects, but there's a lot of dynamic robots, and they worked hard to program their missions, and also they completed projects that included prototypes for exploring future transportation needs, and I just thought that was great. This was on the Facebook page for Pleasant Valley, but I just wanted also to congratulate the Pleasant Valley High School First Tech Challenge team. Everything That's Radical is their name. They had an excellent showing at their qualifying matches, and I wanted to wish them good luck on February 5th at the super regionals.
Great, thank you. Ms. Brockman?
I have nothing tonight, thanks.
Mr. Canwisher?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Lewis?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Zimmer?
I do have some things tonight. First of all, I want to acknowledge Ms., instructor, Ms. Rita Brown is here tonight, and I wanted to just share with you that you always get a little nervous when you have a changing of the guard from one teaching position to another, are they going to continue the initiative and the good work from the teacher before them? And so last year at this time, before this board, I had announced that seven students in the personal finance class had taken the UNI Personal Finance exam, of which they can earn three hours' college credit if they passed the exam, and at that time, five passed. Then again, I came to this body and extolled the virtues of the spring group that took the test, and it was 14 students that took the test and 10 passed. Well, then we had a changing of teachers from Ms. Murphy to Ms. Brown, and this fall, we had 17 students that took the test and 12 passed to earn three hours' college credit. So again, I wanted to give congratulations to Ms. Brown and to the students on the good work there. Also, this past weekend, Director Christina Myatt had 13 students compete in the regional individual speech contest, with nine students receiving a Division I and four a Division II, and the nine Division I will proceed on to the state competition in February. Also, finally, after a long time working at this, we had our two first CNC machinist registered apprentices announced and presented at Arconic last, on Thursday, January 13th. And that has elicited some interest from Leclerc Manufacturing and all that have talked about, hey, we're interested in this, Boyd Manufacturing, machining is interested. So we have three other students, juniors, that will be ready for new employers to interview to continue on this very, very important path, and we're also working on our own registered welding, and then I'm also working on automotive, and I'm working on culinary, so some very exciting things there. And then lastly, I got a email message. Sometimes you never know for sure when you write recommendation letters for students on all kinds of different awards. Sometimes they let you know if they get them or not, but Mr. Erickson and myself wrote a recommendation letter for Erica Holmberg for the CIBA Major Lander Scholarship. This is a big, this is a big honor, and her father emailed and said she was selected, and so she will be representing the CIBA, the Southeast Iowa Bandmasters, Major Lander's representative at the state level, so, great things.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Zimmer, is that it?
That's it.
That's a lot, okay. Mr. Penney Smith?
I have nothing.
Okay. Ms. Damon?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Struce?
I do, I have always a sad day, but an exciting day for certain individuals. We have five individuals who are retiring from Pleasant Valley at the end of this school year, equating to 122 years of service in these five individuals that were announced last week. I'll start with Jackie Dwyer. Jackie Dwyer's been educational aide at Riverdale Heights for the past 20 years, and she'll be retiring here at the end of the year. Mary Acker has been at Pleasant Valley High School for 15 years. If you recall, she was in our nurse's office for a long time, went to our guidance office here a few years back. Liza Peters is an ESL teacher who's been with us for eight years. She'd been previously teaching in California before coming to Pleasant Valley. And then Tara Citrick, 43 years at Bridgeview Elementary, will be retiring here at the end of the year. And also, Mike Duncan in the audience today, long career, started Edison Academy, high school, junior high, but after 36 years, he retired. So congratulations, Mike, and congratulations to all five of those individuals for all the years that they've given to the students of Pleasant Valley. Very exciting, and thank you.
Okay, well, next we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions regarding this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Brockman to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Approval of bills, general fund.
I move that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $180,425.95 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Kunkel that the general fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Nutrition fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $90,667.46 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Brockman that the nutrition fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Elementary Junior High Activity Fund.
I move that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $913.48 in payment of invoices presented. Second.
Motion by Ms. Brockman, second by Mr. Canwisher that the elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. High School Activity Fund.
I move that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in a total amount of $71,974.50 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Ms. Anderson that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Pepper Fund.
I move the Pepper Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $16,781.84 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kunkel, second by Ms. Hoskins that the Pepper Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Internal Service Fund.
I move that the Internal Service Fund warrants 6328 through 6331 be issued in a total amount of $58,254.60 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Canwisher, second by Ms. Brockman that the Internal Service Fund warrants 6328 through 6331 be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And Trust Fund.
I move that Trust Fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $2,530.05 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers that the Trust Fund warrants be issued in the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, now moving on to old business, we are going to do the third and final reading of Board Policy Series 100. Mr. Struce?
So the third and final reading, as Dr. Wugley just mentioned, going through no real changes. Director Canwisher did notice on page 25 that we had left out the word "service" or "train service animals," so we put the word "trained" in there so that just it made it flow better. And then Dr. or Director Canwisher also brought the idea of, in our policies, a lot of the times we, in the discrimination, for example, we might list the person to contact being Mr. Zimmer, and a lot of times, you always have to make sure you are very careful if someone changes a position, that you get those things changed. So we'll note that we've talked about that before. I think we'll keep the name in there for now, but in the future, potentially, we could make a change where it just says the position, contact this phone number, just so you don't miss it, but we'll keep it in there for now. Otherwise, everything else is exactly the same as we've had the last two board meetings, just a final approval, and we'll put those in place. Um, just a final approval and we'll put those in place.
Does anybody have any other questions on the policies? Okay, and I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the additions and revisions to Board Policy Series One Hundred as presented.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Mr. Cambershaw, that the board approved the additions and revisions to Board Policy Series One Hundred as presented. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Cambershaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Yes.
Dr. Wugley?
Yes. Okay, now moving on to new business. Uh, we are going to, um, first, uh, start with the Pleasant View Drive modifications. Mr. Struce?
So over the last few years, we've had on our, uh, policy, look at changing the front drive of Pleasant View along with the resurfacing of the parking lot. Due to the parking issues that we've had, we've gone through and looked at resurfacing and, and making a new side, um, kind of a thorough way off the side for more cars to stack available to us. So tonight we have, um, Bob Drohowski from IMEG is going to go through the plans with all of us to kind of see what this looks like. He'll also provide the timeline of where we will start taking this to bid. Um, then he'll actually walk through what the design looks like, um, so you can see that as we look at moving forward. So it's twofold, it's one, resurfacing, but also adding stacking line to help get the cars off of Crow Creek as we've discussed before. So, Bob, I'll leave it to you to begin and then we'll answer any questions you may have.
Sure, if you want to start on the, uh, that overall layout, uh, sheet of the projects and maybe like, maybe the next, uh...
Okay. I have to look at that.
Yeah, uh, if you want to, let's zoom in, let's zoom in down by the entrance on Crow Creek, just kind of an overall, uh, of our deal, so that we talk to these details. If we, if we zoom in down by the, uh, the entrance to Crow Creek there, that might help out a little bit. Uh, so, as Mr. Struce indicated, um, you know, the, the goals of this project are twofold, one, to replace, uh, the existing failing pavement, uh, along the length of the, of the access drive, uh, to the school, as well as create some additional lane stacking, uh, to, to keep traffic from backing up on Crow Creek Road. We're proposing a, a full-depth asphalt replacement, uh, of the access drive utilizing the existing sub-based stone beneath, um, so you'd be looking at, uh, kind of a, especially given the linear nature of the road, um, you know, it's almost like a roadway replacement project. You'd see from, you know, we'll, we'll mill, um, and remove the, the top five inches of asphalt and, and put down new, uh, in place. Uh, right now, uh, with the project, or with the existing conditions, um, you know, we can, we can stack approximately forty-five, forty-six cars, um, from the location of drop off, if you want to zoom up to the, uh, sorry, a little closer to the school there, uh, from the location of drop off all the way back to Crow Creek Road. Um, so as part of this project, we'll be looking at, if you guys don't mind, I'm just going to get out here and start pointing. Reutilize some of the existing surface, um, from, from the drive to extend our lanes, um, and then also adding a twelve-foot wide lane, approximately four hundred feet long, um, on these, or on the south, south side of the drive. So, what this is going to allow us to do is add another four hundred and twenty-five feet of stacking length, um, I think somewhere around nineteen additional cars. We'd be looking at a thirty percent increase, um, in the amount of vehicles to be able to stack on site. We would have two lanes of stacking all the way up to the, to the back of the, um, the rail there, that would be our, kind of the start of that pickup-drop-off zone. So you're also going to have vehicles stacked along the curb, uh, for that initial pickup. Uh, in the parking lot space itself, um, we'd be doing a, a two-inch little overlay, so replacing about half the pavement. It's not in as tough a shape as the access drive, so, uh, kind of a, uh, a stewardship of, of some dollars there. And we'll be looking to replace the, the current, uh, storm sewer inlets, just the inlets themselves, um, as well as providing a full-depth patch at those locations. Uh, that's where you got a lot of that water sitting this time of year, you got all that freeze thaw, that's what starts popping our pavement. So, um, in, increasing, uh, some of, some of the drainage there as well as replacing that pavement. Um, you know, with, with the resurfacing, we'll be doing, uh, new pavement markings, uh, to help, uh, guide those vehicles, uh, maybe hopefully a little more efficiently, uh, to try to, try to utilize a little bit, thirty car, thirty percent more cars to get them through a little faster as well. Uh, as far as project schedule, uh, we are looking at, um, getting, getting the documents posted on the, um, online plan rooms starting Wednesday, January twenty-sixth. Uh, posting a, a pre-bid meeting, uh, with contractors, um, interested in bidding on Wednesday, February second. Uh, with bids being due Thursday, February tenth, uh, so approximately sixteen-day bid window. Um, we would then be looking to have a public hearing, uh, on the project along with, uh, focal board approval from the parent local contractor on Monday, February fourteenth.
Bob, do you want to go through the budget now or do you want to take questions first?
Uh, yeah, we can touch on the budget. Um, current, uh, cost estimate, um, looking between three hundred and sixty to, you know, with contingencies, around four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, you know, given, given the, you know, the fluctuation of cost of materials, um, you know, the, these have been, uh, been a challenging time to, to try and nail down budgets. Uh, one thing we always, you know, run into in these areas are, are the, uh, the soft subgrades. We have a separate subgrade repair contingency, um, on this project. Now, we are being able to be utilizing the existing base stone, um, of, of the driveway. There's a, a lower probability of getting into that than if we were to take it all the way down the dirt and have to, have to re, regrade. So, um, I, I do think it's important to, to keep that in there, to keep that in the back of our minds. But, uh, you know, anywhere between that, that, say, three seventy and four twenty-five with contingency.
Any questions from the board?
I just have one, so, just to refresh my memory, so is it just two lanes in, in and out of Pleasant View right now? Or like two and a half lanes?
So we've got, it's two lanes in, one lane out.
Okay, so what does that do to the softball?
What's that?
Is it one lane in, two lanes out?
Um, we've got...
No, on the left and a right.
It stacks coming in and then when you drive, you can have a drive-through lane all the way where the buses would go down the middle. And then when we leave, there's one lane that comes out.
Yes, you've got one out, two in.
Yep.
So this, this outside lane along the sidewalk that we'll be keeping, that's kind of our, that's our stacking lane. And then you can see where we've offset that additional four hundred foot, um, lane there itself. So this, it maintains the existing traffic pattern on site, just adds additional stacking lane.
So it is widening it?
It is.
So what does that do to the softball field right there at the entrance? Does it do anything? It's further, it's further down?
Oh, no, no. In this, in this location...
It's not widening, it's not making...
In this location up here, we're just matching exactly what's there.
Got it, okay.
Yep.
So it include the grades, so the grade going up the hill still going to be the same?
Yeah, everything would, would maintain existing, yes.
So with the parking lot, how many cars can actually fit from Crow Creek all the way through to pickup?
Uh, forty-six, depending on how efficient we are at pulling all the way up, then...
Okay. And what is the...
We offer a pay attention. Sure.
And what is the new plan, uh, accommodate?
Uh, using, uh, kind of the same, same numbers, uh, for, for how we divide that up, sixty-five cars, so we'd see a nineteen, nineteen vehicle increase.
And with, uh, the current, I had a parent ask about lighting, are we adding any additional lighting?
Uh, we're not...
On the driveway at all?
Okay.
Uh, they were concerned that it does get quite dark, um, in the evenings and so they did ask about the lighting.
Okay. One thing that is not great about the project, that we will have to make sure we address those, we have all those big trees in the drive when you come in there, those will be removed because of this, now that we like to remove trees, but also the roots of the trees are also causing problems right now on the drive coming in. So, as much as we don't want to do it, we're going to have to do it. And we've talked about, you know, planting additional trees in that area that grow, because it's, I mean, it's beautiful when you drive in and you have all the overarching trees, but they're just going to start dying here pretty soon anyway. And if we were to go in there and try to leave them, we'd disrupt the roots too mad, that would cause issues, so they'll be coming out.
So when there's events, um, big events like winter program, um, often folks will park out on the fields. When I looked at the map, it looked like there wouldn't be any change to that, right?
Correct. That all stays the same. Yep. It's really, when you come in, you can kind of see the dark area, that's all current. When you go straight, that's where the parking picks up again and takes you to the front of the school, so all that grass area will still, the soccer field is, or the field area, that's all untouched.
Will anything be done with the area in the front? Will that be repaved or not?
Are, are we talking, we say in front?
If you were to go straight instead of go right, yeah?
No, no, so the, the limits of the project kind of cut off where we have the darker hatch.
And that area, that pavement's fine and there's no issues?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and actually, uh, so, in the documents, we are asking, or we stipulated to the contractor, you know, in terms of access, we've got one point of access, kind of this narrow, narrow road. So they, the contract will be required to maintain twenty-foot paved lane, consist, continuous paved lane throughout the life of the project, just to, you know, one, maintain day-to-day function of, of the school building in the summertime, knowing that it is, you know, almost just as busy in the summer as, as, uh, during the school year. But two, emergency access is, is the big, big driver there. So your typical emergency access lane is going to be a minimum of twenty feet wide, so that, that's the guidance we're giving them, uh, for this project.
The project has to be done regardless. So really what we're looking at is this additional lane, so the expenditure's thirty-five thousand for the lane, is that correct now, right?
Very close there.
The project has to be done regardless. We're just trying to take advantage of having a contractor.
Right.
Is that the additional pull-off lane?
The additional pull-off lane would be the sum of, of all those, so, forty, fifty-six.
Sorry, I don't need to put in the...
Oh, no, no, that's good, that's good.
I'm just trying to pull that piece out, that, it's a big number with positive.
It is, it is.
And it's nothing.
Yes.
How many cars are typically stacked on Crow Creek right now? Is it about nineteen or is it...
I'm glad you asked that question, I was waiting for the opportunity. Because I'm sitting here sweating at the moment, because I don't want to have this where you go through all this and then you're right back up here, because Fred's been down there, bless his heart, from the freezing, coming down there and watching this, and when the weather is beautiful, the number of people driving is down, we got a lot of walk going on. But by God, as soon as that weather changed and it turned, right now, we'll count anywhere on, uh, Baptist Church, we'll have anywhere from twelve to twenty-five cars lined up all the way around there. There's been a couple times where I've almost had to go down and I've got to stand by where I pull and get, get more in. Fred comes up and will tell me that, hey, just want to let you know down in Shatterbrook there's sixteen cars, or seventeen, or whatever it is. So I'm sitting here looking at this and I'm counting this and I'm going, okay, this helps, I'm not going to, no question about it. But, um, if kids don't start taking the bus, we cannot sit there and put stacking lane for every single family going up there. So two things are also going to have to be added to this, if you want this to be such that, uh, we don't have to have two people down there monitoring this every day. One is there has to be a no parking sign down towards the entrance because you cannot park cars all the way to Crow Creek Road because the incoming buses cannot make that swing. Those cars will have yellow going all the way down the side of them. And we've got it laid out exactly where that cutoff has to be. And it's more like the end of the big block wall, that, you can't park any further than that. And then the other thing is going to have to be approaching the city of Bettendorf, there has to be no parking signs on Crow Creek Road to stop this, which then is going to put, anybody that doesn't fit on this, they can't park on Crow Creek. I don't, I mean, I don't...
And where are we at at Pleasant View as far as growth? Are we at kind of our maximal B or is there a potential that we will grow and have more families than we currently do?
You know, ebb and flow, I mean, we're a four-section building, we're full, I mean, and we're not full in every single classroom, but that always comes up and down. But we're basically a full building at, with six hundred and seventy-five kids in a four-section building and the special programs that are in there. So you're always going to be within that number, so you're always going to see kind of what we're talking about here today, um, in that process.
Are more students, um, getting more comfortable riding the bus or is bus ridership down?
I don't have a good answer for that one, I really don't. I, I just don't.
Yeah. And they'll be zipper merged into one lane, so there won't be, children will not be going across two lanes of traffic to get in cars, but we're, the kids will only enter on the one lane.
So Catherine, you drive in there right now and you look at where the sidewalk is around the outside, that'll still be the pickup lanes of all the kids, there's no kids going across any traffic or in front of any cars. Yep, those zipper merge in before that. Yep.
Is there, have you thought, was there any other proposal that would accommodate more cars?
What about significant increase in costs to create more onsite stacking? Um, yeah, uh, this is, this would likely be the most, uh, budget appropriate.
It's if you're, if you're expanding one lane over, if you expand it to, it's significantly more?
You start, you start adding, you start adding an additional lane, we're already, now we're asking two cars already to, to combine, now we're going to ask three to combine. So you start to lose that efficiency that you've now gained by putting, you know, twelve more cars on site. So we're, we're going to, we're going to slow down how fast we're going to get through the line and that additional cost, you know, is kind of, kind of out the door on, on a loss of efficiency there. It's almost dead money spent.
Like I think of Riverdale Heights, when you fixed the drive there several years ago, just the ability that that one turn lane just helped so much too, and you just don't have that because this drive is just narrow and there's nowhere to go.
Yosef, if you, if you were to drive down Riverdale Heights at eight-twenty in the morning, I mean, there are cars backed up at the stoplight on Douglas Glen. The difference is you have four lanes, so one lane is just backing up cars to a stoplight, everyone else is going by on the right-hand side, or the buses are in the one lane and, I mean, it's just, they just back up there, but they can handle it. Crow Creek being a two-lane road, it's just difficult because there's, you're passing cars.
And just the way this is long, narrow, there's just nowhere to go.
Yeah.
What about the parking lot? I know cars do park in that parking lot there. Is there, there's so much field space, is there any potential to get rid of that as a parking lot and move the cars to park and use all that space instead of having cars parked there? I mean, that's why it has to be one lane, right, going through that intersection because of the parking lot that's utilized there.
Oh, to the, well, just a lot of...
Yeah, cars are parked along there, which is why it has to be one lane around. We could have cars parked in all this field space that isn't being used, we can have two lanes going all the way around and not have to create an extra lane.
You could extend the, the drop-off around, but currently with the vehicles in there, there's, uh, you know, a, a safety issue with backing up traffic, uh, or backing up cars into, into that space.
Right. I mean, is that, I know it's extra cost, but is that something that was considered, having a more parking lot space out into that field, eliminating that as a parking lot?
Given the budget constraints, it was not, it would be certainly more expensive if we were to pave something out there.
And I think that's the only green space we have. So when you go out there for a PE class, when kids, you have multiple classes out there, they're all doing things in that space. You're going to turn it into a parking lot space.
Yeah, not the whole thing, but I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's probably the most green space for any school in the district, I would think. I mean, there's a lot out there in that baseball field. There's just a lot of space. I was just trying to find a way, because yes, it, we definitely need to do it, but it's a significant amount of money to maybe not be a complete solution to our problems, so that's. But, you know, we have to stick with a budget too, so just trying to help with the brainstorming.
Are there any opportunities to release certain grades earlier or late? I mean, I know what comes into play is you have siblings that one's in sixth grade and one's in, you know, kindergarten and trying to, I don't know if there's just any opportunity to get, I guess, maybe a longer release time that would allow.
We could look at that and see.
Some cars in and out quicker than, you know, knowing this, they're going to be out fifteen minutes earlier and.
I, I don't know, I mean, you can drive by the high school and it's a two forty-five dismissal, and you got cars starting to park there at two-ten in the afternoon.
It's usually the same people.
Right. I mean, it's just, I, people just arrive early and wait. But it's just, there's a lot of drivers.
With the suggestions that Mr. Zimmer made regarding the no parking signs and on Crow Creek and not having people park, like he mentioned, you think that, how much improvement you think that will make in this, in the situation?
I think any signage and field markings can help with self-monitoring versus us having to enforce behavior instead of trying to create learned behavior, so.
They would just have to circle around until they could actually pull in?
They're going to end up on Shatterbrook. I don't know what else to tell you. I'm just walking, just reporting back from the field, exactly what I see every day, especially if the weather gets cold or it rains or something like that.
So are we, does anybody else have any questions? Just? Oh, yes. Go ahead.
You're saying on your numbers that you now can handle about sixty-five cars. At two fifty-five today, there were fifty-six cars in line from up there on Crow Creek. There were two cars parked to pick up kids in the parking lot area. Apparently, there were a couple empty, so parents went in there and waited for the kids to come out. On the grass were five. And then something new I saw today, Mike, is there were like eight cars headed over to the north entrance, where I thought there's only buses were picking up kids. And I think now some parents have said, come out the other door, I'll pick you up over there. That meant that there were seventy-one cars today on site. At three oh-five, I went down to Shatterbrook, there were eighteen at that time. I had counted as many as twenty, twenty to twenty-two down there in other, I've been up there a few times. And at three-ten today, off-site, there were, let's see, at church, there were eighteen cars. And we've seen, like I said, as many as twenty-two to twenty-five there. So altogether today, there were a hundred and seven cars waiting to pick up kids. And you're talking about sixty-five. So I kind of wonder if our students work at this point until we do a little further study. The other thing that I had noted with Mr. Fotten last week, this area up here is a play area during the day. That area is vacant when kids are getting out. That is almost, well, I think it's as large as the parking area at Baptist Church. I think it would hold about twenty to twenty-two cars. If you program it right, make a circle, and you have to have people out there directing the kids, so that you don't have a safety issue. I don't, I don't know. That's my numbers today.
Yes.
I just, we do have a need to have some cars being able to enter for meetings. The eight cars we saw today are twelve of the best high school students that come down and tutor at this every day. So they're the ones that are coming in on that middle lane with the buses and looking for parking. And they're coming to get their children's hours done. And they carpool, because they're so parking. So, and they also have, you know, IP meetings and parent meetings that typically are three to three different. So there is some need for, for people to be able to use that middle lane, because they cannot wait. I mean, they can't wait in the car pickup lane to get in there for some activities that they're doing at the Baptist School.
Does the cost estimate forecast the labor material based on when the project's going to be done? Or is it the current rates that that estimate's based on?
It's, it's using some of the current costs that we've seen coming in on projects that we've been bidding right now. So obviously, the largest, you know, material use on this project is asphalt. And that directly correlates with the oil prices, you know, where they are. So, you know, best data we have available is what we've got for that cost estimate.
So how much do you think that's going to go up? That's the real question, right? I mean, you've been doing projects presumably for the last year. How much have they grown month by month or quarter by quarter? And I know it's a guess.
Yeah, it, we haven't seen the costs of those types of materials go up as much structural scale as the big one. You know, it seems to double, double all the time. You know, asphalt still, it still stands relatively competitive.
Okay.
Mr. Klingey Smith, do you happen to know, like, with this budget here, I mean, was this, was this forecasted? Or how, how is this going to get paid for?
It's on our five-year capital projects plan, but I believe we'd have to rearrange some things.
We originally put on there, I don't have a number in front of me, but three hundred something was originally designed. Like three hundred and fifty thousand, I think, was originally designed for this project. We have a Bridgeview parking lot that we were looking at also redoing, that we are going to put on hold right now. So for a five-year capital projects, we will use those funds to help offset this addition that we're looking at here.
Joey, did you have a question?
So just to clarify the cost, if we did nothing to try to increase the stacking ability, like if we weren't doing that extra lane, we'd be doing the project anyway to the tune of two hundred and seventy-five thousand or whatever.
Yeah, you'd be upper chews, reports of interest.
And we'd, we'd have to do that anyway?
Correct. It was on our plan to get that done this year anyway. Yes. And then with the traffic issues, we just looked at what could we do, because we visited with Fred Dodds. And we looked at it together and said, what can we do?
So if we ended up doing this, and depending upon if there was still an issue, would we also be using the, the Baptist parking lot as well?
The goal is hopefully not to have to.
Right.
I mean, you can't predict necessarily what's going to transpire there. How tight can you get the cars? I mean, it's close. It's, I mean, that's kind of that number we're looking at was twenty-ish and, I don't know.
And of course, in the summer, it's fine. In winter, it's nice, it's okay. It's just during these winter months.
That's going to get you to about, oh, I don't know, depends on when the snow starts flying, Thanksgiving, thereabouts.
Maybe we can try and petition the, the city also to expand Crow Creek to four lanes as well. That would be nice. So we could work on our city officials there too.
Can you explain the road going up to the junior high? Let's.
That's the clear goal, that's the clear.
You look at me, yeah. When we talked to the city earlier and talked to the police department, they struggled with this at most schools across Bettendorf and Pleasant Valley Schools. I mean, it's, it was happening at St. Leclerc, at Cody and Bridgeview, and trying to solve those issues. It's just people drive their kids to school. If they put them on a bus, we don't have all these issues. But yeah, that's the bottom line. People are just bringing their kids to school.
So, so do we, I think maybe Jody asked this question, I'll ask it in case I missed it. Do we know why they're riding in cars instead of buses and what can we do right to offset those questions? I think that's maybe, then we could proceed in a sense with this in a little more comfort that it may actually address the issue if we can cause a shift, but without knowing what the cause of that is directly.
And I think there's lots of weather concerns, even on nice weather, if it's a rainy day, when you have more people driving and those days, they don't want them standing at the bus stop.
I mean, you drive out to junior high in the morning and you can sit back on that bridge way back, because people are waiting to bring their kids. And when you think, okay, how long are they willing to sit in the line for versus having them on a bus? I don't, I don't know. I don't know how to solve that question. I mean, hopefully, people would have them ride a bus, but to bring the kids.
Yes.
I was going to say, it's not just bussers that are being brought down, like walkers to, here's that are well within the walking lanes. We noticed at Riverdale, when they sit in traffic almost from their house to get dropped off.
And I have one more thing, and I, I remember you all, so I think there's, and please understand that I'm not blaming parents at all in any way, shape, or form. But if not everyone follows the rules in terms of pickup, it makes the pickup time a lot longer. I do pick up every single day at Riverdale Heights. And if the drop-off in the morning is relatively smooth, pickup should be very similar if kids are ready to go to get into their cars and they're watching for their parents. And so, and, and all cars are following the same exact rules of going all the way up here if the kids get in their cars. So this is, I think that there's a lot of difference.
Preparing stuff really play a role. I think that you get a class before your kids can come into kindergarten. You have to pass the test and the drop-off.
I just say, from doing Mr. Riverdale Heights every day, it's about February where we finally feel like we get all parents and all pickup adults conditioned to pull all the way up, wait for your kid, do not get out of your car, roll down your window or hold up the sign. I mean, at Riverdale, we've implemented where they write their kid's name on the sign, and then we can yell before they even stop to get kids in the car. So maybe it's more of systematically, how can we help get cars through faster in order for it to not take as long to get kids in cars? And then it wouldn't stack up, or it wouldn't be stacked up for as long. It would start stacked up probably, but it wouldn't be stacked up for as long.
So it sounds like we have a plan of the bidding and everything. And so this was on our five-year plan. We are going to do some modifications to try and improve the situation. And so if people, if the board is, is ready to move on this project, then I will take a motion.
Can I just ask one question? If we vote, yes, we're voting for this plan currently, we're not going to go back and try to look at other options to address some of the issues that were brought up.
I mean, some of the things we've talked about, give you an example, that playground area, you know, it's not surface designed for cars to be driving on a daily basis. If you use that parking lot off the side or look at trying to find ways to put more kids in there, again, you could be crossing traffic and element your kids crossing traffic in front of cars. I mean, it's just a tight area to try to figure out what's the best way when it's a one-way in and a one-way out. And maybe in the future, there's differences. I, no.
So maybe with this modification, and then maybe some better communication on why riding the bus might be a better option, might be able to help alleviate some of the issues.
Isn't that idea of letting the kids, they look in the window, that's really smart, because then the teachers.
Our Savior.
So. Can, does somebody want to make a motion?
I move the board approve IMEAG putting out the bid for the Pleasant View parking lot project.
Second.
Motion of Ms. Hoskins, second of Mr. Ears, that the board approve IMEAG putting out for bid the Pleasant View parking lot project. Roll call vote, please. Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Ears.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher.
Yes.
Mrs., Mrs. Conkle.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is a Board of Education twenty-two, twenty-three board meeting calendar. Mr. Struce.
So nothing on this, a great deal. Look at the calendar dates. It's still the first and third, or sorry, second and fourth Mondays of the month. There are some where we will have these, the first starting at five-thirty versus the sixth due to concerts. And you'd see that'd be December ninth, February thirteenth, and April twenty-fourth. The rest will be all six o'clock starts. We would still continue on with our tradition of having one in July and one in March. Board meeting versus two in that month.
And one in December.
Thank you, and one in December. As we get close to those dates, if something were to come up, we can always change at that time. But this at least sets the yearly calendar in front of us for the upcoming dates.
Does that seem to be okay? It really hasn't changed much from previous years. Do we decide the December date today, or can we wait on that?
So the question behind December really comes down to what you guys would prefer. It'd be December fifth or, well, typically it'd be the twelfth is when we'd have it. When you look at December, we had on the twelfth, but based upon the needs of all of you, the, the twelfth is a choir concert, and I think the fifth was the band concert. So both nights are going to have a conflict. We'll start them at five-thirty on either one of those nights. It really comes down to maybe as a personal preference, if we prefer the fifth or the twelfth. Mike is able to do it from a financial standpoint, either one, so that's not an issue. It just depends upon maybe where your kids are next year in terms of band or choir.
Molly, you won't, you won't have choir next year, right? And were you the only choir?
No.
And it is for us too. We could have free for that.
Right.
So.
So choir for you?
Final be a goal.
And Jody, you have band?
I have band.
I likely will have both.
Is nineteenth coming too close to Christmas?
The nineteenth of December? I have to look and see on that one there.
It's equidistant, that's.
You'll feel it.
I think we start break the twenty-first.
Yeah.
That'd be correct, yes. Right now, it would appear to be open.
The nineteenth, is that too close for people to Christmas time?
We just have to check what we have this year and a corresponding date. This year on the twentieth, we did not have anything that evening.
But several of us were going to be gone, that's why we didn't.
That is correct, yes.
So, but I don't anticipate to be gone.
So if that's, we could, that's a clean.
That's a clean night, exactly.
Correct. There'll be some sport events, but that's not uncommon.
And why don't we at least shoot for the nineteenth, and if something changes, we can do that. But let's plan on it being December nineteenth. Okay?
Thank you.
And we do that at six, not five-thirty, right?
Correct. That'd be a six o'clock start in that, yes.
So with that, I will take a motion, and if you want to add.
I move the board approve the twenty-two, twenty-three board meeting scheduled as presented. Second.
And just, can you specify the date, please?
No, I just made a note. I mean, we could specify all the other dates. There's no need to specify all the December dates.
Okay. Okay. Motion by Mr. Ears, second by Mr. Canwisher, that the board approve the twenty-two, twenty-three board meeting schedule as presented, or as amended. Roll call vote, please. Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Ears.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher.
Yes.
Ms. Conkle.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes. Okay, next up is modified supplemental amount, amount funding for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two for statewide voluntary preschool program. Mr. Klingey Smith?
Okay, this is something new this year, and it's related to the pandemic, the COVID-nineteen pandemic. During the last Iowa legislative session, the Iowa General Assembly granted authority for the SBRC, which stands for School Budget Review Committee, to award funding to school districts that experience an increase in statewide voluntary preschool program enrollment during the current two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, or school year, resulting from the decrease in the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year, during which many parents kept their children home due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. This was made possible by House File eight sixty-eight, Division Four. That's the piece of legislation that was passed during the last legislative session that made this possible. Here at Pleasant Valley School District, we have two of our elementary schools that have a preschool program. Bridgeview Elementary School and Hopewell Elementary School have a preschool program. In addition, we have two private providers that operate preschools here within the boundaries of our district. Kitty Carousel Academy Preschool in Leclerc, and Our Savior Lutheran Preschool, not too far from here in Bettendorf, has a preschool program also. Now, the statewide, statewide voluntary preschool program, the funding for that just applies to four-year-old students who are participating in that preschool program. This year, when we did the certified enrollment, we had thirty-five students enrolled at Bridgeview Preschool Program, twenty-nine students at Hopewell's Preschool Program. There were twelve students being served at Kitty Carousel in Leclerc, and one hundred and nine students being served. And again, these are just four-year-olds. A hundred and nine four-year-olds at the Our Savior Lutheran Preschool. So as part of this legislation, our school district is eligible to receive twenty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents of additional modified supplemental amount funding. So we get the spending authority, but then we also would get the cash to back up that spending authority if we approved this application to the School Budget Review Committee to apply for this. Now, one of the stipulations of this money is. the stipulations of this money is that it is required to be spent as part of the preschool program. You can't spend it on something different. And also, it has to be spending related somehow. The purpose of the spending has to be related to the pandemic. We have to file a report to the School Budget Review Committee indicating the purpose of the request, the dollar amount of the request, which of course, the dollar amount of the request would be the entire amount that we are eligible for, that $25,294.50. And then the intended use of the funds related to the pandemic. So they do specify it has to be related to the pandemic. And then the date that the action was taken by the board to approve the request. And this money that the state is providing, they are receiving it as part of their ESER funds that they get from the federal government. So that's where they get the money from. And then they pass it through to the school districts. So there is additional guidance that will be coming out on this according to the email that we would receive, that we received. We'll be awaiting that additional guidance as we solidify our plans for how we would spend the money. I don't know if you had anything to add to that.
Nope, we got it.
If any questions regarding this?
How do you anticipate we'd have to spend the money? Like, how do you, where's our need for that? Like, yeah.
Um, go ahead.
So what we'll be looking at is we'll get the guidance from the DE and what, how it can be spent. And then we'll sit down with Cindy and all of our directors and see, okay, what does that look like? And how do we disperse it out, whether it's curriculum that we want to pick up from a learning loss standpoint, or it might be supplies, equipment. We'll have to wait and see what that looks like and how we can spend that.
So we don't have the guidance on how we can spend it?
Just have to be pandemic related is all we know right now, but there will be additional guidance coming out. Okay? Any other questions? If not, I will take a motion.
As part of the district's response to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, the district's administration is authorized to submit a request to the School Budget Review Committee for funding related to FY22 statewide voluntary preschool program, increased enrollment in the amount of $25,294.50 or the amount determined by the DE after review.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conkle, second by Ms. Brockman. That as part of the district's response to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, the district's administration is authorized to submit a request to the School Budget Review Committee, SBRC, for funding related to fiscal year 2022 statewide voluntary preschool program, increased enrollment in the amount of $25,294.50 or the amount determined by the DE after review. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Ears.
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins.
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle.
Yes.
Dr. Wugley.
Yes. And Mike, you are added again regarding the annual comprehensive financial report and the annual review of that and why we're going to submit it.
All right, yeah, thank you. So this would be the sixth year in a row that we would be applying to ASBO, the Association of School Business Officials International, and to the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, to achieve, or to receive the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from ASBO. And then GFOA calls it about the same thing. They just add a couple of words, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. Prior to six years ago, the school district did what's considered just a basic audit report. But six years ago, our financial auditors that we currently use, Bonsac and FraMilt, they, they talked to us about how it could be beneficial, potentially beneficial, to do what is called this, the annual comprehensive financial report, which is a more detailed version of the audit report. It has a lot more statistical, historical and statistical information in it. And one of the potential benefits of doing an annual comprehensive financial report as opposed to a basic financial audit is potentially when you're borrowing money, and of course, the school district has had to borrow money over the past, in the past 10 years or so, you potentially could get a lower interest rate on the money that you borrow by doing a more detailed annual comprehensive financial report as opposed to what we used to do, just the basic financial audit. In your board packet, and Beth has it up on the screen here, is just kind of a summary of the annual comprehensive financial report. And I'm just going to go through some of the things that are on here that you saw in the board packet related to the annual comprehensive financial report. The first paragraph you can see there, why we have an annual audit. Chapter 6, section, chapter 11, section 6 of the Code of Iowa does require every school district in the state to have an annual audit. Also, our federal funding is subject to an audit because of the requirements contained in subpart F of Title II U.S. Code of Federal Regulations. This is a long title here. Part 200 Uniform Administrative Guidance, excuse me, Uniform Administrative Requirements. I'm not going to read the rest of it. As you can see, it's very lengthy there. But that, that, that part has to do with we expend over $750,000 during the fiscal year in federal awards. And that was especially the case this year because of the money that we've received through the federal government from the ESER funding related to the COVID-19 pandemic. So that, that's the other reason that we are required to have an annual audit. As I said, this is the sixth year that we, in a row, that we will be applying for those Certificates of Excellence in Financial Reporting we have received at the previous five years. An annual comprehensive financial report is a set of financial statements that provides a thorough and detailed presentation of a school district's financial condition and goes beyond the minimum information necessary for fair presentation in conforming with generally accepted accounting principles. The annual comprehensive financial report has four categorized, categorized sections. There's an introductory section, a financial section, a statistical section, and a compliance section. As I mentioned earlier, number two, if you scroll down a little bit on this page, Beth, that you have on the screen there, why apply for the Certificate of Excellence? Well, here are the reasons. We receive constructive feedback on our ACFER to help us improve the clarity and completeness of future ones. Earning the Certificate of Excellence honors our school district's transparency and full disclosure of our financial information. As I mentioned earlier, that you see underlined there, receiving the Certificate of Excellence may help strengthen our district's presentation for bond issuance. So that gets to the possibly being able to get a lower interest rate when we borrow money. We also demonstrate to our community that the district is credible and committed to fiscal integrity. Also, Certificate of Excellence recipients do receive an award certificate. Right outside the boardroom, as you were walking in, there are the two plaques that have our awards out there that show each year as you get a new one, you just add a little medal to it for each year that you were awarded the Certificate of Excellence. So those are right outside the boardroom there. Also, you get recognized in a couple different national professional publications. School Business Affairs, Accents Online, and School Business Daily are three publications by the Association of School Business Officials. And we get recognized in those publications for getting the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Some of the highlights of the actual annual comprehensive financial report, there's a letter of transmittal towards the front of the report on pages Roman numeral three through Roman numeral 10. This is the letter from myself and Superintendent Strews to members of the board and to residents of the school district that presents the ACFER to them. It contains information such as the basis of presentation, the internal controls structure discussion, a profile of the school districts, our financial policies, major initiatives and achievements, and the economic condition and outlook of the school district and the general Quad Cities community are part of that letter of transmittal. Then pages Roman numeral 13 and 14 in the ACFER show our actual previous year's Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting that we received from those two organizations. So those are on those pages in the report. The most important, one of the most important things, the whole purpose, main purpose of an audit is the auditor's opinion on the financial statements. If you were to look at page two of our audit report, the cat, or the ACFER, the first paragraph of it shows the auditor's opinion. We received an unmodified opinion that was issued on our financial statements. An unmodified opinion is the most desired result of an audit. An unmodified opinion means that the auditors are saying that it is their opinion that the district's financial statements have been presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So we did receive the ultimate goal of an audit to an unmodified opinion. The next pages of the audit report, page four, pages four through page 16, is what's called management, management's discussion and analysis, also referred to as MDNA. MDNA, well, GASB, G-A-S-B, Statement Number 34. GASB stands for Governmental Accounting Standards Board. This section is a narrative summarization of the district's financial statements and financial condition for the year. It takes the audited financial statements and puts the information in a narrative form. This is an important section of the audit report as it will help answer questions if the reader reviews the financial statement section of the audit report. Most of the narrative portions of the MDNA have been prepared by me, as the MDNA is management's responsibility and not the auditor's responsibility. The auditors do give us kind of a template to use when we're writing the MDNA, but the actual contents of it are management's responsibility. The next section of the annual comprehensive financial report on pages 17 through 20 is what's called the District-wide Financial Statements. This section looks at the entire district's finances broken into two types of activities, the governmental activities and the business-type activities. The district's only business-type activity is our food service program. That is the, as I said, the only business-type activity. All of our other funds in the school district would fall under the category of a governmental activity. These statements use what is called the Full Accrual Method of Accounting, in which fixed assets, depreciation, and long-term assets and liabilities are recognized on the books. The district's net position, formerly known as net assets for the, for the fiscal year, and this is for the fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2021, our net assets increased by $5,524,210 during the fiscal year, or 9.9%. So our net assets in the district as of June 30th, 2021 were $61,175,670. Then the next section of the report, pages 21 through 29, is what's called the Fund Financial Statements. This section looks at the governmental major funds individually and combines non-major funds into one column. The major funds for the district during the 2020-21 fiscal year were our general fund and our capital projects fund. Our capital projects fund includes the district's physical plant and equipment levy fund. That's what we refer to as PEPAL. And then also our statewide sales services and use tax fund. That is the fund that the one cent statewide penny sales tax money goes into that fund. So those two funds make up the, the district's capital projects fund. On the fund financial statements, only shorter-term assets and liabilities are recognized in those financial statements, with the exception of the school nutrition fund, which does recognize fixed assets and depreciation since it is what's called a proprietary fund or most like a business out there in the world. The total governmental funds balance as of June 30th, 2021 for the school district was $27,153,437, which was a decrease during the fiscal year of $4,704,712, or 14.8%. The main reason for that decrease during the fiscal year in the governmental funds balance was we have been using our money that we previously borrowed to pay off the construction on Forest Grove Elementary School, which of course, just opened up this fiscal year. So as we pay off those funds that we borrowed, that does decrease our overall fund balance in the governmental fund. So that's the reason for the decrease there. The general fund, unassigned fund balance, however, during the fiscal year increased by $2,611,342, a 60.6% increase in our unassigned fund balance and just our general fund during the year. And a lot of that had to do with the money that we did receive during the fiscal year from the government for the COVID-related pandemic funds. It was part of the reason for the increase in our fund balance in the general fund. Our capital projects fund balance decreased by $7,695,192, or 38% during the fiscal year. Again, the reason for that is what I mentioned earlier, paying off Forest Grove Elementary School. The construction on that is why the capital projects fund decreased during the year. Our school nutrition fund net position increased during the year by $362,859, or 23%. So despite not charging students for most of the fiscal year for a basic lunch, our fund balance or our net position in the nutrition fund still increased during the year by $362,859. And that's because the federal government offset the money that we were not receiving from students, charging students for the basic lunch during the fiscal year. Our internal service fund, that's where we account for the district's self-funded health insurance and dental insurance programs or plans. That increased, the net position in that increased by $166,918 during the fiscal year. And one thing I was going to point out that's not on these pages here, I think it was mentioned earlier in the board meeting, what our overall budget is in the school district. For the 2021 fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021, our general fund expenditures were $55,962.9, excuse me, $55,962,993. When I started with the school district 21 years ago, our general fund budget was just over $21 million. So that shows you, in the last 20 years, our general fund budget has well more than doubled over what it was when I first started here, as now it's at $55,962,993. Our overall expenditures, if you take into account all of the other funds in the school district, our capital projects funds, our nutrition fund, and all of those various funds, our expenditures during the last fiscal year were $74,563,134. So nearly $75 million expended from the school district during the 2020-21 fiscal year. Number nine on here that Beth has up here, then the next section of the audit report is the notes to the financial statement. This section has various notes summarizing the significant accounting policies in the school district. It gives more details on our capital assets, assets in the school district, and our long-term liabilities. Pages 56 through 64 of the report are what's called required supplementary information. Some of the information in this section, it shows an actual versus budget comparison. There's a section in this one that talks about our liability, the district's liability, and how much we contribute to IPERS, the Iowa Public Employee Retirement System during the year. The next section is what's called other supplementary information, pages 65 through 70. That shows a more detailed breakdown of our non-major funds in the school district. And then pages 71 through 107 are what's called the statistical section. This is the section that. This is the section that contains numerous detailed reports, many of which do have data for the last 10 years for the school district. So, that's a good one for comparing how things have changed in the last 10 years in the district financially. Then, the last section of the report, pages 108 through 118, is what's called the compliance section. It's important to note that this year, there were no instances of non-compliance or material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in the, that the auditors noted in our internal control structure over financial reporting. Also, there were no instances of non-compliance, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies in the internal control structure over federal awards that the auditors found this year. So, it was actually one of our cleanest reports that we've had this year. They found absolutely nothing as far as deficiencies or material weaknesses in our control structure this year. So, very pleased that that was the case. There were also no findings in the section that's called Schedule of Findings and Question Costs for the Fiscal Year. So, again, a very clean audit report. I would like to thank our business office that works with me. Lori Wakelin is the district staff accountant. She does a very large portion, or helps out on a very large portion of getting the auditors what they need to do this report. Lisa Paper, our bookkeeper slash accounts payable person's heavily involved in it. Kelly Hatler, our payroll person in the district, also works with the auditors quite a bit. Andrea Mailer, who just retired, or I guess resigned from food service, and she's been replaced by Cory Campbell. Cory will now be the person with our nutrition fund who will work with the auditors on the audit. So, again, big thanks to those people. Debbie, I think you help out some with the auditors a little bit. Anyway, big thanks to all those people, but none of this could be done and we couldn't get these awards if it wasn't for hard work of everybody in the business office. That's all I had on it. I'll take any questions if anybody had any questions related to it otherwise. There is a fee for applying for, I forgot to mention that, there is a fee for applying for the Certificates of Excellence. It's $1,110 to apply for the one from ASBO, and a $1,220 fee to apply for the one with the Government Finance Officers Association, but we feel that those fees are well worth it to be able to get the, recognized for these awards, so.
Does anybody have any questions for Mike?
Mike, I read a lot of audit reports at work, and congratulations to you and those who assisted for boring me to tears with nothing interesting in them. Thank you for that.
This stuff is boring to most people. Molly, you probably find some interest in this since you're an accountant.
Yeah, well, I, I think it's very commendable because it's very hard to get a clean audit report because those auditors are really going to be looking for something because they'll want to find something, and to them not be able to find anything is really a testament to your work and your staff's work, because I know how tedious it can be to put together all of these numbers and go for those, you know, the accreditations that you're going for are so tedious, so thank you for doing that year after year. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Anything else from the board?
I can just attest to the attention to detail, because I didn't have a $6.90 receipt from parking on the Washington Mall, and Lisa Paper hunted me down, gave me an invoice, and I said, "That's fine, here's a $6.90 check." So, that's worth every bit of support.
Yes, of course. Even Mr. Zimmer has to follow their lead. All right, well, then I will take a motion.
I move the board accept the Pleasant Valley Community School District Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the year ended June 30th, 2021, as issued by Bonsac, Bonsac and Fromm L.L.P.
Motion by Ms. Hoskins, second by Ms. Anderson, that the board accept the Pleasant Valley Community School District Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the year ended June 30th, 2021, as issued by Bonsac and Fromm L.L.P. Roll call, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ears?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle?
Yes.
Dr. Wagley?
Yes. And if we didn't have, if we didn't even have enough for Mr. Plainsmith to keep him busy, there is one last item here, and that is for you, and that is the December monthly financial reports.
Well, this one will be much shorter unless you have any questions. We are already halfway through another fiscal year. Our fiscal year runs from July 1st through June 30th each year. So, as of December 31st, you have the financial report in the board packet, and as I looked through it, I did not see anything that stood out as unexpected or unusual. Again, we continue in the nutrition funds to not charge students for the basic lunch, but like last year, that is being made up by money that we receive from the federal government, so our nutrition fund is still in good financial shape, thanks to the reimbursement from the federal government there. Otherwise, like I say, I didn't see anything that looked unusual, so unless anybody has any questions, I'll just take a motion on the December monthly financial reports.
Anybody have any questions? I'll take a motion.
I move the board accept the monthly financial reports for December as presented. Second?
Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Ms. Conkle, that the board accept the monthly financial reports for December as presented. Roll call, please, Ms. Damon.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ears?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle?
Yes.
Dr. Wagley?
Yes. Okay, and now we will head into exempt session, so thank you all for coming. Yep, no problem.